All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Role call has been taken and we'll go ahead and send for the pledge of allegiance. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Second by Trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all those in favor for approving tonight's agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up are to approve the minutes of the special board meeting on May 27, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Trustee Wake. Second by Trustee Walsh. Any public comment on these minutes? CNN, all those in favor for approving the minutes for the special meeting, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May 27, 2025? Moved by Trustee Wake. Second by Trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all those in favor for approving the regular board meeting minutes of May 27, 2025, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, next up is public comment. We, the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right and privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interminate or interrupt an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes or personally directed to an individual. Do we have any public comments?
We do have public comment. First comment is Scott Choak.
Hello, I'm Scott Choak, C-H-O-O-K. Madam Chair, members of the board. I was hoping that on, that our CBA agreement would be on your agenda tonight, but last night, our MEA bargaining team was here with your bargaining team from four until about 11:30, and I know being here late is not a new experience for you. While we haven't yet reached a tentative agreement, our late nights reflect good faith bargaining, and that's something we're proud of. I also want to thank Micah for being at the table with us last night while Trevor is traveling. We're moving, and the district is moving. We've been bargaining increases for starting teacher pay for years, and this agreement will likely reflect a double-digit percentage increase to recruit the next generation of MCPS educators in accordance with the STARS Act. MEA members are also committed to rectifying the negative real wage growth that veteran educators have experienced over the past five years. We know new educators rely on the mentorship and expertise brought by our veteran teachers. We're looking forward to continuing to bargain in good faith over the next weeks and months. I'd like to switch gears here and talk about one of our high schools. When people think of Missoula High Schools, they immediately think of Hellgate, Big Sky and Sentinel, but of course, we know that Sealy is also a Missoula High School, and of course, Willard is an amazing school too. But there's one more that is often forgotten, Connect Academy, our new online charter school. I think we forget Connect because what they do, because what they do is not what people think they do. Connect means a lot to me personally because I taught at the Missoula Online Academy for three years, building that program and helping it improve year after year. I'm sorry. I think people mistakenly believe that the Connect model of online education is what we did after the lockdown in spring of 2020, but it is not. It is robust, synchronous, live, and engaging teaching. When I taught with MOA, my relationships with students were never better, and there's an intimacy that stems from coming to each other from each other's homes, and positive relationships foundational to teaching. So tonight, I'd like to advocate for two things for Connect. One, when you do your site visits, please include a visit to Connect in the rotation. And two, I encourage you to please invite a Connect student to serve as a student trustee next year. There are students that are willing and eager and able to serve in that role. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Next up is Rachel Gerhart.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
Got it, thanks. Good evening, I'm here tonight to advocate for an additional third grade classroom teacher for the upcoming school year at Chief Charlo. This request is not made lightly. It is based on clear data, our current capacity, and the critical needs of our students. As you know, next year, our third grade will serve 58 students divided into two classrooms of 29 students each. One classroom will have nine IEPs, and the other will have 11. That's 20 students with significant identified needs, making it more than a third of that grade level. These aren't just numbers. This group of students is near and dear to my heart. They were my very first kindergarten class at Chief Charlo. I've known them since they were five. I know their strengths, I know their stories, and I know how much they need us to do right by them. This is not just a group with high need, it's a group full of potential that deserves the chance to thrive. According to Vern's report this winter, our school has the third highest number of IEP students at the elementary level in the district, ranking above two title schools. As you know, Chief Charlo is not a title school. We don't have a social worker, we don't have any title teachers helping close academic gaps for students, and we don't have partnership in the building helping students in crisis. More so, we do not have strong systems in place to support students proactively. This is not just a matter of staffing, it's a matter of structure. Our school has only met three times all year for Tier Two and three times for Tier Three. This means students with emerging needs are not being systematically identified, monitored, or supported. As a result, Tier Two students are often missed, and until they require Tier Three support, we don't see them. They then, at that point, have challenges that have escalated and become more intrusive, disruptive, and more difficult to remediate. The lack of systems is directly contributing to the number of students in crisis. My role as a school counselor should be balanced between prevention and response. Instead, the majority of my day is spent reactively managing students in crisis alongside our behavior interventionists, leaving no margin when another need arises. Tier One lessons essential to school-wide social-emotional growth get canceled because I'm pulled to help in these acute situations. With our new administrator coming on board, we have a critical opportunity to reset and rebuild. This additional teacher would give us the capacity to lay the groundwork for long-term systems, including Tier Two and Tier Three problem-solving meetings, Tier One SEL instruction, and a true multi-tiered systems of support. We are not asking for a permanent addition, we are asking for a strategic one-year investment that will allow us to stabilize, regroup, and put systems in place so the cycle of crisis and escalation doesn't continue. Thank you for considering this essential and timely request.
And last up, we have Susan Ray.
I'm Sue Ray, I teach second grade at Chief Charlo. I know that in returning here, I risk being seen as a whiner or a complainer. I'm not. Regardless, that's a risk I'm willing to take. I have nothing to lose, but some kids I love do. I'm back to put a few things that were said at the last meeting into real-life perspective for this particular group of kids. Jeff asked what is in place to support teachers in tough situations, and Dr. Hill answered with a list. Before I go through that list, let me tell you about an incident that happened the other day. A child became seriously dysregulated outside his second-grade room. He became so loud that his teacher and a nearby teacher had to close their doors. His teacher told her kids that she would put on music and that they could wear their headphones if they needed to. It took five adults and 25, over 25 minutes to help that child regain control. Meanwhile, 44 second graders were unable to learn or even feel safe. This was not an isolated incident, just the most current. Keep that situation in mind as I go back to Dr. Hill's list of available supports. He mentioned fit and FRC, willing, but not her role. Case management, yes, and Liz is completely swamped and would have had to be pulled away from teaching other kids. He said that if a teacher is struggling, she can go to the building principal. He stopped by. Behavior interventionist, she was there, along with two counselors and a speech therapist, all who did leave other kids. The classroom teacher helped once somebody could cover her class. Social worker, don't think we have one. Remember, Chief Charlo is not a title school. He mentioned that there are district specialists. In a crisis, nobody has time to call them. Even with these supports, many of the kids we're talking about will be even more overwhelmed in big classes, class size matters. I need you to understand that it's more than just the number. For years at Chief Charlo, we split four second grades into three-thirds. Carla, Lori, and I put them into classes of up to 28 regularly. We didn't come before you in those years. This group is different. I wish every school could be looked at as if it had an IEP, an individual plan. I understand the argument that we can't do for one if we can't do for all. I've used that with kids myself, and I've also granted a request and explained why. Sometimes things need to be equal, and sometimes they need to be fair. I appeal to you who are parents, aren't there times when one child needs something that your others don't? And won't you go out of your way to help that child? That's what we're asking. One more year of reasonable class size for this particular group of kids. Please keep them in your heart, and if anything changes over the summer, think of them. Thank you.
No more public comment?
No more comments.
Thank you. So next up are reports and announcements, and now we have announcements from Superintendent Hill.
Turn my microphone on. Good afternoon, or evening, I guess it is now. Just a few announcements. We had a very successful graduation weekend, this past weekend, so thank you to the trustees who were able to attend. We shook a lot of hands going across the stage. School is winding down, we're in our last week with students and staff, saying goodbye to a lot of longtime employees and to our students, and so that's always a bittersweet time. We are posting and hiring positions like crazy right now, there's a lot of movement and turnover as we work through some things from just a district perspective, and so we continue to do that work, and we'll continue that into the summer. And finally, I am headed later this week to Helena, where I will be a delegate assembly to the school administrators of Montana to help shape and guide our desires and needs for schools through the decennial study and the next legislative session. So I'm looking forward to being an advocate for our schools in that realm. And that's it.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is the consent agenda. There is no board discussion as these are routine items. We will have two motions in elementary and a high school. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Walsh. Second by Vice Chair Garris. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on the consent agenda? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is the high school consent agenda item. Is there a motion to approve those? Moved by Trustee Hayes. Second by Trustee Wake. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this high school consent agenda items? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is number eight, which is new business, and first up is a transportation budget amendment, and this is over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is the second step in the process of doing the budget amendment, so the board approved the proclamation. We published the proclamation, and now we're asking the board to adopt the budget amendment resolution, which is attached, and the first one is for the elementary and the second is for the high school. They're, both amendments would provide funding to purchase those Type E buses.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Walsh?
Just, just to clarify for everyone, this is money, we're purchasing these with money that couldn't be used to add teachers.
Right, it's the transportation fund coming from the reserves of that fund, yeah.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, is there an elementary trustee willing to put forward the motion for the recommendation? Moved by Trustee Hayes. Second by Vice Chair Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is the high school one, do you have more to add to that?
Nothing more to add.
Nothing? All right, any questions in regards to the high school amendment? CNN, is there a motion to put the, forward the recommendation? Moved by Trustee Wake. Second by Vice Chair Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And the next item up is the renewal of the inter-local agreement with the city of Missoula, and this is back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So it's hard to believe, it's been five years since we signed the inter-local agreement with the city of Missoula Parks Department. This is to operate a community-based school at Lowell. Really, it's about offering and providing program to, to those students and to provide opportunities for the north side, west side neighborhood. And we met with the Parks folks last week, and what we decided would be the best course of action was to request a year extension of the agreement, and during that period of time, we can work out any specific modifications. I think there are a few that, that we would have, and, and then this would give us the opportunity to put that together. The agreement is a five-year contract with five-year renewal, so this would just be a one-year renewal while we, while we consider some further modifications.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Hayes?
Pat, thank you. Just a quick question, is this just for the playground, or is this for the entire building?
Yeah, good question. So there's, there's the separate agreement, just with the city for Westside Park, so this is for the school, and so this relates more to the school and less, less to the park.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Hayes?
Yes, so with it involving the school, is there any way we can, I know in our tour, there were some issues with the cameras and wanting more cameras. I just have, from a safety perspective, concerns when community is using one of our facilities, what is security like during those times, and just making sure that we are keeping our students safe and making sure there's adequate camera coverage.
Yeah, and I, I know there's been some requests for outside cameras and cameras pointing in certain directions, and I think it's, it is on the O and M radar, but I don't have really much more information than that. I do think, I just add that what makes this partnership with the Parks Department really beneficial to our students is, is the type of staff person that the, that the city provides or Parks Department provides, and we've had different arrangements with very well-meaning nonprofit organizations through the use of volunteers that do great, but it's, it's a, it's a different level of oversight, is what I would, would say, and so I think that's what helps make that sort of coverage most beneficial in this arrangement, is, is that relationship. Not that it doesn't mean we shouldn't have cameras, but it is, is a real plus.
Trustee Witcher?
I can, I can speak to it a little bit, so taking my trustee hat off and putting, this is a program that Parks and Recreation runs, so the city essentially brings in around $300,000 worth of soft funding and hard funding from our, from our Parks District Fund to do wraparound services for families and kids at Lowell, so they get a highly reduced after-school program. Staff in the building, we work exclusively with them, and so one thing about the cameras, though, is that recently it came up, there's a lot of activity at Westside Park, and so it is a request that we're working with, with the school district and with the SROs and with the city to talk about the increased number of security cameras at Westside Park.
Trustee Walsh?
Okay, not a question, just a comment. I just think it's so wonderful anytime we can partner with the city. I think in the spirit of being good stewards of tax dollars, we can just get so much bang for a taxpayer's buck when we make these kind of great partnerships, so love this, hope we can continue expanding these kind of relationships.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, this is an elementary motion, is there a trustee willing to put forward that recommendation? Moved by Trustee Hayes. Second by Vice Chair Garris. Any final trustee comments? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I had noticed that the bottom, it says for one year, and, and that's really just one year, even though it's been five?
Yeah, very intentional. We want to really take the time to look at modifications to the contract, and so with the intent of extending it on a long, more long-term basis.
Any other final comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. You're not going to vote? All yea, abstain, abstention from trustee Witcher. Recommendation passed. Next up is to approve Denise Williams as district clerk as an authorized signer for Missoula County Public Schools, and this is back to you, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So this is somewhat perfunctory because most often, organizations that we work with recognize the role and the authority of the role, but sometimes organizations require board action and board minutes that reflect the authority granted, so this is really a request to have the board formally grant that authority to Denise as an authorized signer. It really comes up with banks when we have, when we list Denise as a signer of petty cash accounts for schools, and, but it comes up in, in other ways, so just trying to get in front of authorizing her to have that authority.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion, is there a motion to put forward the recommendation? Moved by Trustee Wake. Second by Vice Chair Garris. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is personnel negotiations and policies, and first up is to approve the personnel report. We'll do an elementary and a secondary, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Hill as Lebowski is gone.
I'm sure I won't do justice to how he says this at every single meeting, but this is a routine item. Thank you, thank you.
Any trustee questions? CNN, we'll do elementary first, is there a motion to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by Vice Chair Garris. Second by Trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? CNN, oh, Trustee Walsh?
Can I just ask a somewhat related question? The transformational learning grants, were those, that was something that was up in the air during the legislative session, if we were going to continue getting that, did we continue, are we going to be able to finish our first four-year grant?
So we were, we came into the funding cycle last year, so that was the first time. The funding was continued for this year, and then the legislature voted to create a Phase Two, so they stopped funding anybody who's currently in, and they've created a, an opportunity for only five school districts in Montana to be eligible for that. So we will be putting in an application once it becomes available through the Office of Public Instruction, and then it would be hopefully approved by the Board of Public Ed.
All right, any public comment on this motion? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. I don't want to keep turning it off. Next up is the high school personnel report, is there a motion to approve the personnel report? Moved by Trustee Wake. Second by Trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All those in favor for approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is teaching and learning, and so it's to review the EL-12 Health Enhancement curriculum, and this is over to you, Ms. Laslovich.
Thank you for having us. I'm, I have the easy job tonight. I am actually just introducing Jenna Briggs. She led the health enhancement review over the past year, so I'm going to turn it over to her and her team.
Great, thanks for having us today. My name is Jenna Briggs, and I brought two of our awesome health enhancement teachers with us. This is Vicky Obstad from Russell Elementary and Ally McFarland from CS Porter, and we're going to show you some of the work we started last spring. This represents our team, so we brought together a team last May to start looking at health enhancement and the shifts that have happened at the national level in the standards. We had representations from EL-5, 68, and 912, and then we had some overall representation from stakeholders within our district also. So we had Sarah Ibis from our Native American Student Services to advise on how to incorporate IFDA. Mackenzie Burns is one of our occupational therapists, and she helped really raise the whole group up on adaptive PE strategies and how we could be supporting our students better. Erica Zins joined us from Student Services and Counselors to help with the mental health portions that are added. Brooke joined us as a head nurse and advisor for just community health, and then myself, Casey and Barbara. When we look at the timeline of our work, we started again, like I said, last May, and the first thing we did was started by overviewing the new shifts from Shape America. So Shape America is where we get our national standards from, and they have both physical and health standards. Some of the big shifts that we saw were new inclusions of focusing on mental health and wellness in the new rewrites. We saw new health, or excuse me, no, new physical, physical standards around social development, so problem-solving, cooperation, sportsmanship for kids was enhanced more, and just the idea that health and fitness is no longer a goal and grade-level specific, but more of a journey that kids are on. So meeting kids where they're at around fitness or nutrition and then taking them to the next level. So one adjustment you'll see really obviously is that no longer in the elementary especially is it kindergarten, first grade, second grade, it's in bands, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, so that you can see where kids are at on the continuum and then help them to the next level. We also looked at the newest youth risk behavior data that we had to look, that's very typical at MCPS, to look back and see kind of what our students are doing and how we can support them. What you'll see on the timeline that we did a little bit better, I think, this time than normally, is after each piece, where we prioritize the standards and kind of decide as a group what's most essential, and based on the new research, what do we think is most important, we would always go back and check in with our teachers. And a lot of times in our reviews, we do a lot of the work and then check in on the teachers, a lot of the works, and so this time, we really try to be more proactive about constantly checking back in with the teachers after each meeting, which I really think helped give them more time to engage in it upfront, and then also time for feedback earlier on as the process was developing. So after we prioritize standards, then continuing in May, we created scope and sequence for each of our grade bands, and then we began to write learning intentions, so goals that we're working on, and then success criteria, the steps of how we're going to get there. Continuing in May, it was a very busy May last week. We worked on proficiency scales, again had Mackenzie work with us a lot on adapted PE and how we could be supporting all of our students in health, health and physical education better, and then we began to work on resources. So being able to source some of our information, health, as we know, is often quickly evolving, so digging into newer resources, newer content, and beginning to draft resources and action plans for our grade levels. Again, going back to the teachers at each step, and then this kind of, this spring, we really wrapped up by And then this kind of, this spring, we really wrapped up by working with BIA, and BIA helped advise us on some of the new legislation related to health education and steps that we needed to take as a district as far as being more explicit with all of our slide decks, lesson plans. We're used to showing our curriculum, but it was at a more granular level now, so you'll see related to health and human sexuality, there are slide decks available, lesson plans, assessments, all student-facing material are now provided to the public, and that's what we're kind of talking about today. So again, we made those changes, surveyed our teachers, and then brought back our feedback. So some of our recommendations that we can see on this is elementary's going to work in pockets. So knowing that we can't move everybody right at once, it's a long-term plan over the year using our district early outs of how we're going to tackle a lot of these changes. So elementary is broken up into groups, and they're going to focus on things such as improving their scale, so improving the way they're assessing students and giving feedback, continuing their work around IFA and how they're working in standards together with them, our adaptive PE strategies, and then vaping and tobacco. So we're seeing a need on the data and also anecdotal data about moving vaping and tobacco information into our fifth-grade classrooms, and so there's going to be some movement to, as a PLC, to scale everybody up on that and be ready to teach and prepare our students for that. In 68, we're recommending a purchase of GW's Essential Health Skills for Middle School, and this is our human development and relationships portion. Yeah.
Are you taking questions as you present? Are you?
I'm happy to. Yeah.
I have a question. So seeing that you put in vaping and tobacco, is that a high area of, are our elementary seeing a lot of vaping and tobacco?
What we see in the trends is that the ages are getting younger, and we try to go two years in front of the trends of where you're seeing tobacco and vaping show up to make sure we're educating. And so typically, we were looking at sixth grade as the earliest, but it's, there's definitely a need to be in front of that, in front of, as far as like fifth grade before they're getting to middle school, to start the conversation with them, so that they're prepared by the time they're in there. But yeah, we did see that in the youth risk behavior as a need to move it earlier.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I apologize. It's a very poor question.
That's okay.
Health enhancement.
Yes.
What classes does that encompass? PE, health classes, all of those things?
Health enhancement is Montana's version of saying health and PE. So we say health enhancement as a combined, meaning they're woven together and not separate classes. If you, when we get to the next slide, you'll see the specific courses listed for high school also.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question, but it blends the two together, health enhancement instead of health and PE. When we're looking at six or eight, again, the recommendation is a purchase of a supplement that would improve our human development and sexuality modules that our teachers teach. Again, it gives us a concrete example to provide to the public as far as lessons planned, slide decks, and assessments. And also, it's been an area since the last review that we've just continually tried to improve and help our, especially our middle school teachers, help everybody feel comfortable with it and prepared and ready to teach. Again, middle school will tackle the long-term look at district early outs, and they'll be doing things such as our Catch Health Journeys, which is our long curriculum that we use throughout the year that covers all the other health topics related to that specific grade band. We'll be looking at Erica's Lighthouse, which is a suicide prevention program, and preparing our students for that, or teachers for that, excuse me, and then also looking at the, hopefully, purchased GW materials to help them be prepared in the spring for human development and sex ed. 912, we're looking at a similar purchase, same program, but just a higher grade band. Sorry. Yeah.
So I know I have middle schoolers, and I've seen the papers come home. How many parents or how many students opt out of human development, sexuality? Do we have a lot that opt out, or do, how does that work? It's just something.
I feel like it's going to be anecdotal, but Ally can make, I feel like it's very few, but that's probably.
I have three health classes of about 25 students each, and I had two opt-outs this year. That's typical.
So the 912 is the same program, just the high school version of it. So it's modules 9, 10, and 11 that we would be looking at, and those again cover just the basics of reproduction and human sec, or excuse me, not human sexuality, reproduction and human development. And again, for high school, we'd be looking at that long-term training plan of looking at the different areas, such as nutrition, mental health, all the different things they're tackling in their health course over the course of the year in PLC work so that they can begin scaling up. That's also where we would look at bringing in community partners on topics that teachers are advocating for being interested in, so if they need more information on vaping or they need better information on sleep, these are the places where we bring in the community partners to work with our teachers in early-out structures so that they feel more prepared in the classroom to be able to deliver that content in its newest, you know, best statistics, newest way to look at it. Yeah.
Yes, and we've adopted history books or English or whatever. Those are always put out in the building for at least a month for the community and for others to look at. So will this be the same process?
Yes, they're ready to go after tonight to look at for 30 days. Yep. Both physical print and a digital way to look at them as well.
Trustee Witcher?
So I have a question. A lot of special ed parents talk to me about adaptive PE or the lack thereof offered in our district for our kids with disabilities. Can you talk to, about, like, what is our process? What do kids in like, in EL to fifth grade who are in special ed who have disabilities, what type of PE do they see? And what's our plan as a district? And did Vern speak to that at all in his special ed breakdown?
I don't know if I can speak to the audit. I can speak to, I think it's, it does seem that, I know that there is a concerted effort around improving it, and so that's why we're bringing, Mackenzie was really great about working with our teachers and talking about strategies and building it in, and then.
Mackenzie was just due to budget cuts, is no longer with the district. So that's also like what I'm getting at too as well. If like the main advocate for adaptive PE is part of the health enhancement team is no longer there, what's our plan? I know this is really pointed and it's a presentation, but I at least, I appreciate y'all's work, and you're amazing and all that jazz too.
I would say physical therapist too.
Yeah, I would say Mackenzie was sitting on as a physical, as an occupational therapist, and so her partnership was much appreciated. And I think our, we have some things from Shape, some modules about how we include individuals with physical disabilities and intellectual disabilities that are in both the middle and the high trainings as standalone, like national presentations and trainings. But yeah, I think to be determined how we work at the granular level.
And I don't recall offhand that Vern mentioned anything about adaptive PE in his report.
Trustee Walsh?
Thanks so much for all your work on this. I just want to ask some questions that I think people might be wondering in our audience. So this isn't putting any additional work on classroom teachers' plates, it sounds.
Yeah, this is health enhancement teacher. So some schools do opt, I can let Vicky speak if she'd like to, but some schools do opt to structure it instead of going into the PE classroom. They choose to do it in the classroom with their teachers. From all I've understood, it's usually a collaborative conversation about if they want their kid, you know, they're like, please do not take the physical movement out of today, like, we'll do it as a lesson together in class. And so that's usually a local site-based decision that some schools make around specifically human growth and development and eventually what will be the vaping probably.
Okay.
So it can be all done in the gym. Some choose not to, though.
Love that.
Yeah.
Okay, my other question is about the middle school band. Does any of this content relate to like anti-bullying strategies? I keep hearing over and over again that we've just got to do something about bullying at the middle school level, and I'm hoping maybe human relationships and development would encompass.
Yeah, it's in the wellness, like wellness, mental health strand, and then it's also in the social strand and the physical part of PE around cooperation and problem solving. Want to speak to anything specific? Ally did all of our middle school, a lot of our middle school work, but I would say it's absolutely all, the social-emotional piece is woven in there far better than it was the last iteration of national standards.
Fantastic. Now we can say, no, we're really, we're taking steps forward. Wonderful. Okay.
This is where you'll be able to see the specific courses. So you can see, again, what we're representing, that kindergarten through second grade band, the third through fifth grade band, six through eight, sixth, seventh, and eighth all standalone. At our middle schools, all of our teachers are Gen Ed certified, and so they teach some health and some PE at some of our middle schools. At Washington, for example, they teach health or PE, so there's places for those teachers to jump in and be trained as well. And then 912, you can see what health enhancement encompasses. So it's that semester of health, which is Health Choice II on that document, and then they also do three additional semesters of movement, whatever they're choosing, which as an interesting point, this, this around, we have, you know, 600 to 700 kids in strength in most of our high schools, so the weightlifting classes are picking way up compared to what they used to be. So I thought that was an interesting shift from the last time we reviewed this content area. You can see at the bottom, that is the link to access the materials we're asking to be purchased, as well as the passwords that will be available to look at in print or also online. And I think that's it. Are any additional questions?
Any questions? And this is information only. Questions? Comments? None? Nothing?
I was just going to say, I can't say a lot till I look at it. Okay?
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments from a trustee. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none? All right. We are now on to item nine, which is, we're adjourned. 6:40. Thank you, everybody.